Township of Oxford Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 14th, 2021. Can you please rise and pay your respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the role?
Noted. There's a forum.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz, it's an excuse for this evening. If you go to item four, approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda for Thursday night, October 14th, 2021.
I'll support.
We moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That agenda passes. Item five, approval of the minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the Planning Commission regular meeting minutes dated 9/23/21.
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The minute passed. Item number six, public comment for items that are not scheduled for a public hearing or that are not on the agenda for this evening. Anyone out in the public who should speak?
I'll come say hi. Hi, everyone. I'm Ashley Ross. So I wanted to come up and say hello. Thank you very much, and hopefully the next meeting I'll be joining all of you.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're his replacement.
I am.
Yes.
You can share the meeting.
Oh, I don't want that tonight.
She will be taking a spot on the commission for when I leave, November 1st.
Oh, so this is in the interim until what, then the end of the year? How's this work?
I will be leaving November 1st. So the next meeting scheduled is October 28?
I think so, or your term.
Next year, I turn?
Well, no, I mean...
Her term runs through December 31st, 2021.
Oh, okay.
And then she would be reappointed.
Okay, that's what I want to hear yourself. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter, I love you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to commissioners comments. There's none.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
John Wick?
I have no comments.
Roger?
I have none, I guess at this time. Thank you.
No? Uh, yes, the Township Board approved the driveway setback to come back to funding for the driveway setback to come to the Planning Commission to be assigned to the ORC to review and evaluate. That last night's meeting.
All right. Very good. Let's move to item number eight, public hearings. There aren't none this evening. Move to item nine, new business, A's zoning map review.
Howdy.
Good evening.
So this is another one coming up from the ordinance review committee for your consideration whether or not to recommend it to Township Board for monies. So the quick version is these past six or nine months in the course of zoning administration, I've run across some very peculiar properties that are zoned in ways that didn't make sense from looking at it. So there's a large neighborhood, I forgot the name of the subdivision, on the south side of Drainer, completely built out of single-family homes. It's zoned multiple family. That causes a lot of issues in the short term. If someone wants to put in a pool or a shed, the setbacks are really big and it's really difficult to do it. In the longer term, if they're building, if their house burns down, they may not get to rebuild it because it was a non-conforming use. You'd need to put apartments in, in multiple family. How that happened, I'm not sure, but we've, as that popped up, I noticed a couple of other areas where the properties didn't quite fit the use. And then we went and looked at differences between the current zoning map and the future land use map. So the future land use map is where you want things to be in the future. Some of it is near term and some of it is as far as 20 years out in the past, out in the future. And just very low tech, I made a map that showed all the areas where there are divergences. There are lots of them. It's, and one of the things you do after a master plan and on a yearly basis is just regular map maintenance for the folks at home. And some of these differences are more immediate. The, for example, that entire neighborhood that is owned RM instead of single-family. There are parks properties, both that the township owns and has parks on and within the planned subdivisions that should be zoned recreation.
You don't know the name of that stuff?
What's that?
You don't know the name?
Some of them are just individual parcels.
Yeah, so all the green.
I haven't heard of some.
Okay. Here is the...
One of them is off Coats Road there where the, it was residential property and the parks and people purchased it.
Yep.
But never rezoned it for recreation and it was owned single-family.
Yeah, that one there, there's one up here.
And there's others in different locations throughout the community. You just have to kind of look for them.
And the one off Pontiac is still zoned residential. So some of them are very immediate things that could get attention or should get attention. Then there's a kind of another category up. So the ordinance review committee thought that it would be good to look at those right now as part of what we're doing. The next kind of category of differences are shorter term things. So if there's a property, for example, that is likely to be developed or redeveloped or change in use in the next five years, and the future land use map calls for it to change to that, now is a good time to look at that. And the ordinance review committee was in favor of looking at that as well. Then there are longer term differences. So these are closer to the 15 or 20 years. So like the large gravel bit there, this calls for it to be various types of residential. This calls for an industrial up here, but that, you know, that assumes there's going to be some sort of sewer or demand for industrial in the future. So there wasn't really interest in pursuing those types of changes at this time from the ORC. And then there were some, I call them deeper examination. These are where the current use and developmental standards and character of the neighborhood are consistent with the current zoning, but the future land use map may call for something a little bit different that may or may not entirely make sense. So Cedar and there, that's R1A, which is the kind of the smallest property with the smallest setbacks, the smallest lot area. Master plan calls for it to be a slightly larger zoning district. And before jumping into something like that, it's good to really analyze and see, is this going to, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot that people can't do anything? Is it making all the houses non-conforming? It may make sense. There are a couple of other areas down here. Willow Lake, same situation, we're zoned R1A, future land use, calls for the next level up zoning. ORC wasn't interested in doing that at this time. Kind of the future ones can be flagged, and this, this type of zoning map maintenance is a good practice to get into every three years or so or after you do a new master plan. So tonight, the question before you guys is whether or not you want to recommend the Township Board to pursue this and whether or not, I guess you're consistent with what the ORC suggested, that the immediate issues and the short term, the five-year issues. One other thing I'm going to say before we get into discussion, see all the blue on That calls for public or institutional zoning district. So the idea is that that's where the zoning district at this building should be in. It's the zoning district that cemetery should be in, that wastewater treatment plant should be in. And it also calls for churches and those types of institutional uses to be within that zoning district.
Or educational.
Or, or the schools.
Right.
Right now, the schools, the high school is in residential, I think R2. It's, it's a use that can go there. It's a public school, they can go wherever they want, but it causes weirdness in the application of the zoning. So for example, the enclaves, because that zoned residential instead of public institutional, had a hundred-foot setback from it for their multiple family uses. If it had been public institutional, it would have been a 40-foot setback. So even though the schools can be there and wherever they want, it causes weirdness to the others. Now, for the public institutional, and I have heard support from this, it's, it's a zoning district that doesn't exist in your current zoning ordinance. So that would have to be created with developmental standards added and kind of little checking of spots where it would be important to make sure that the district is mentioned and included. Because of the way your zoning ordinance is structured, it's not too difficult a task to add a zoning district. Some zoning ordinances have an article for this type of district, an article for this type of district, an article for this type of district. So in those cases, you'd have to add an entirely new article into your zoning ordinance. The way you guys have it, it's just part of one article. So you've got an article that says, here are our zoning districts. You've got an article that says, here are the developmental standards and uses for the districts, instead of kind of pulling them off. So it would be a bit more work to do, but not as bad as it could be. And going for the public institutional right now would clean a lot of things up in those weirdness areas.
What zoning is this building in?
R1A.
What about, like, right now, the school just bought Dominican Sisters? What would have to be done with a lot like that?
So future land use map calls for it to be institutional, public institutional because the church use that was there. For the schools, there's a weirdness in how public schools are set up in the state of Michigan that instructional facilities and athletic facilities fall under the domain of the state superintendent of schools. And so he gets to say where schools can go and how far they have to be. So basically, local zoning does not apply to public schools for instructional facilities and for athletic facilities. It does apply for administrative buildings and bus barns if they're not a part of that campus. So if their plan would be, for example, to just have an administration building there, it could be a challenge because it's currently zoned for residential. And there'd be conflicts. Normally, schools just say, we're schools, and the community's like, okay, I have a school, do it. But if you actually read into how the constitution is worked, it's just athletic facilities and instructional facilities. If they wanted to do a school there, they could do it regardless of whatever action we take here.
Well, I think the plan is eventually to do both. So it would have to be rezoned.
The public institutional, Mr. Chair? Go ahead, John.
The public institutionals come up in many different conversations. And what we're trying to do, or the suggestion is, is to ensure the greater consistency with the master plan. And the master plan does call out public institution, is that correct, Zach?
Yes.
So we're answering an obligation of the master plan with changing our zoning map. And some of the future expansion, the township, such as fire station number three, we're going to want to make sure that's in the right zoning district. When we discussed that, it's been brought up in meetings that I've attended, the ball started rolling down the hill. We found out there were other, the Township Hall, the water treatment facility. So that's what kind of brought this out, to look into this, to update our zoning map. That's, so it's very important that we push this through and through.
But, but, excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Well, let's just open for discussion.
Okay. Zach, I mean, I think you got to be a little specific tonight, too, what ones we've prioritized and what we want to ask for first in order. So, because I don't think, we're not going to take every one of these to the Township Board.
Oh, no, no. Well, and tonight, again, is only, is really to discuss, is this something that the Township wants to invest money in doing and kind of outlining some of the scope? So my recommendation, and this isn't necessarily property specific, but the immediate ones that we know there are issues on.
I think we should address those for sure.
And there are, another good one that could be pursued at this time is kind of the shorter term areas where we know or expect that there are going to be changes in use or pressures for changes in use in the next five years.
Down the road.
And that's a little bit of an art form to...
Yeah.
And that's something what ORC would vet and work on its body. The other good one for action right now would be the public institutional district, which is kind of a mix of both of those, immediate, short term, and next couple of years as mentioned with the fire station.
Right. Well, shouldn't that be addressed immediately, the public institution?
I, I would advocate for it, yes.
I would vote that way, yes, yeah.
So as matter of discussion for the commission to get somewhere, we're really discussing, can we ask for funding, the immediate needs and the short term needs plus a new district put together, public district? Do we want to ask Township Board for that money so we can go ahead and do that?
That would be the ones I, that would be the ones I would support.
Right. Anybody else got any ideas or questions or concerns?
I think, well, who's the Township to pursue this because it, like Zach said, it opens up a can of worms.
Correct.
Down the road.
Well, some of them were done somehow without the knowledge of anybody in this room. How they occurred and how they happened, we have no way of knowing. We just want to get them in the correct order. I get to clean up what should be in place for anything coming down the road in the future. So I think the three you just mentioned are what I would like to support to move forward to try and get funding for.
I need a refresher on the three. We had immediate need with public institution, what was the...
Yeah, creating the zoning district of the institution, which wastewater, education, recreation falls underneath that, okay?
And the, the shorter term, five years?
The, yeah, the immediate, what you call the immediate divergences.
Mm-hmm.
And short term divergences. I think on the longer and the deeper, in my opinion, yeah, we can kick that can, maybe two more years down the road or something like that, or less. I think for the coming year, 2022, yeah, we should get funding for that.
All right, repeat again, exactly for 2022, what we're going to pursue?
Creation of the public institution district.
Right.
Which wastewater, education, recreation, those things will fall under that district. Now, in parallel to that, we're going to look at the immediate divergences that he's found, such as the large neighborhood on Drainer that's zoned one way, but it's actually reflected in another.
Right.
Which affects setbacks for pools and that sort of thing. And then the shorter term divergences, which are the ones that aren't actually consistent with the future land use map that we just put forward back in 2019 or early 2020 with the master plan. Any other questions about what we're looking to do or concerns? There's no more discussion, I don't know, for either...
I do have a question, though. I mean, we're talking about funding, since I don't recall at the time I've been on this board that we've gone through this practice or act, but where is the need for the funding for, for the lawyers to review everything?
So there's, it's a couple of ways. Number one, it's for the ORC to meet, because we use those guys now almost on a weekly basis. A, so you guys can meet.
Right.
B, so Zach can write dialogue.
Okay.
And then get lawyer review, time to have a public hearings, that sort of stuff. It's got to be funded.
I don't think we have any actual figures right now to look at, do we, Zach, for what it might take to do this? Did you have time to think about that, or?
I didn't put anything together because I wasn't certain of the scope.
Right, we didn't know where we would go.
The, the actual GIS mapping portion at the end is probably somewhere around three hours. There's going to be some updates, the parcel information from your current zoning map because there have been some splits and the enclaves exist.
I know, but we're talking about everything from attorney's numbers on down, so.
Yep.
We got to get through legal deals and the rest on it.
About three hours of actual GIS mapping time, preparation for ORC meetings and the materials. Since I've already kind of done a lot of this incorporation for here, it's not going to take a whole lot of effort on my time to identify, it's just going to be the sorting, and I already have an idea of that, so that, three to five hours likely. The public institution district is going to take a little bit more time, but it's not a new or unique district in the role of planning and zoning, so a lot of samples we can already look to. That's probably somewhere on the hour.
Well, I guess what I'm getting to is normally when we go to the Township Board, they, they start asking dollar signs. And if we're going to make a proposal to make some of these recommendations, to make these changes, we got to give them something, I don't want to say total ballpark, but something pretty close that we feel we can complete this with. I don't want to go back to them again later and beg for more money to get where we think the Planning Commission wants to go, so.
Mr. Noel? What's happened in the past has been a deep conversation in regards to hidden costs is what the Board has accepted is a, is a proposal from Zach to cover his hours. We don't, we can't foresee a lot of those things that, that the attorneys will use and how much time will be spent on that.
Okay.
But what we really look at is, is what Zach is doing. And I've not heard any deviation from that, that's the way we've done it in the past.
We could hold one public meeting to make all these changes at one time, right?
Yep, so a, a process detail, for those of you, if you get asked at home or at Dunkin' Donuts, is this is different than a zoning map amendment like we did on 930 Drainer recently where there's a public hearing and you were notices sent out to people 300 feet. This is, would be adoption of an entirely new map. So the notice would be in the newspaper, and that's all that you're required to do because you're more than 11 properties that are changing. You could send notice out to the individual property owners if you wanted to, it's not required. There would be a lot of letters going out, but it's not required.
Zach, you're talking Michigan State law?
Yes, yep.
Mr. Chair? I was just going to comment on the feed. I don't think that the Board last night, when they approved the ORC to review the driveways, I don't think you attached a dollar amount to that, did you?
No, sir, we did not attach a dollar amount.
Oh, and they may not have listened, interesting.
They may not, but in the past, we've, Zach will write a letter, explain the need, what is going to be done, and then put down estimated hours.
Approximate.
Approximate.
My, my guess right now, just from my chicken scratchings, is it's probably going to be about 20 hours of planning zoning time, probably one or two ORC meetings.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Noel?
I'd like to make a motion that we update the current zoning map to cover, to update, create a new public institutional district. Number two is immediate divergences to the needs and the short term issues that Zach talked about. And to forward this to the Township Board for funding. I would also like to add that Zach wrote a detailed summary of what, of all the things I just said, so the Board can have that all laid out for them when they review it.
I'll support the motion for, for comment.
We moved and supported. Is there discussion or questions on the motion?
Well, I want to make a couple.
Mr. Chair?
Just so that we understand, the, the public institutional district that we're talking about is entirely new. And so it would be first described with a definition by definition for what its uses are, and then be, to be included within a, a new zoning district map. So I just want, I just want to make sure there's clarification that everybody knows that's what we're actually doing. And then the immediate divergences, obviously, we have to do. I mean, we got, even the Township itself is in the right zoning classifications. I'm sure they're going to want to do that. And then the shorter divergences for future use of the properties is obviously very important. So I hope everybody understands that's what we're trying to move to the Township and Zach at possibly 20 hours plus a few ORCs, I think that could be identified to the Township Board and what that expenditure could be at a later date.
When will this be presented to the Board?
When's the next meeting? It'll be November.
We can make the November meeting if we wanted to. Can we all vote?
Does it, or the ORC, should the ORC go?
Depends on if people are hunting. We have to be careful how we answer that right now.
Well, the next meeting should be October 28th, right?
And not the Board.
No, just the Board.
10 through 11, so that's true.
He just means the Township Board.
November 11?
I'm working on it.
It's the 10, I think.
Thank you. 10.
Yeah. Oh, will you be at that meeting?
I don't know yet.
Zach will be invited.
Well, I'll attend. I make sure I'm there. I think this is important. It needs to be, and maybe the Board will automatically feel, you know, needs to be taken care of, and there should be no discussion.
Well, there may be questions that they'll have. It's a little hard to understand at first, and so someone needs to present it in a way that people are understanding what they're actually asking for. So...
Well, Mr. Noel will be there, right? More than likely.
Yeah, he'll be there.
Perhaps.
Mr. Chair, a little motion on the floor.
I'll call the motion.
Call it.
Yeah, I'll call the motion.
All right, I guess I have to take a roll call, though.
Do you want to? Okay. Sure. Noel?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Burger?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I want to add, if I may, that we will put a nice package together to take to the Board.
Okay. Very. Okay, 9B, schedule of uses and associated zoning tax amendments.
Oh, again?
Hello, again.
So this has been an updated document based on our conversation at the last meeting with some comments from the attorneys mixed in, and it was reviewed by the ORC last Thursday kind of for completeness. And just to check, make sure I didn't type anything weird, well, anything unnecessarily weird. So today, my understanding is that the interest was to continue where we finished, and that would be on page three for business, commercial, and retail uses. Do you want me to give you an introduction of the changes there? We do have all three of the ORC folks, so they can speak to the reasons behind it. All right? Well, not hearing objective, I'll go in. So the idea with A and B was that we felt it was pretty clear what administrative or professional offices were, and we didn't think it was necessary to enumerate all of them. It was, B was eliminated because that was the same thing as A. I always debate, though, whether or not adult regulated uses should be business, commercial, or entertainment and arts, but this is where it is. We added automobile service center. That's like belt tire or something like that, where we get general work done on the car. It's listed in as a use, but not, wasn't in the use table, that's how it got added. The bed and breakfast, there's a lot of them that are there, where before it was just a single bed and breakfast. Your definition section describes three different types of bed and breakfasts. So a bed and breakfast resident is basically you rent out a room in your house, like the old-school Airbnb before you rented out the entire house. The inn, I believe, has up to six rooms that you rent, so it's the more traditional bed and breakfast inn that you imagine when you close your eyes. The bed and breakfast hotel, I believe, is up to 20 rooms, so it's closer to an actual For clarity, we added building material or lumber supply or home improvement center because it didn't really fit cleanly in any of the other descriptions, and there's a lot more of those now than there used to be. My question for this body under Q, financial or business service establishment, is whether or not you need to have those descriptions or if you have an idea of what it is with just financial or business service establishment. Offices, nonprofit organizations, that's something that the attorney is a little anxious on. They would prefer to have it just be office, because if you start to discriminate between different types of uses, you have to have a good reason. because if you start to discriminate between different types of uses, you have to have a good reason for it. Uh, the reason why, my understanding was, is that it's currently separated out, is there's concern in the community that if the limited office space becomes used for nonprofit or tax-exempt entities, then that could erode the tax base. So they're still permitted, kind of in little different areas, though, but. Pawn shop was pulled out separately. Previously, it had just been in retail sales up to 10,000 square feet. Because of the nature of pawn shops and how they're a little bit different, it was thought worthwhile to pull it out. And essentially what this does is it says you can only do it in C2 districts, which are the larger commercial districts as opposed to the smaller ones closer to houses. In the retail uses, we just cut out the descriptions again, because retail use up to 10,000 square feet, we felt was pretty descriptive. One little divergence here that I'm gonna bring up for consideration is your zoning ordinance uses 70,000 square feet as the demarcation point between smaller and the bigger retail uses. Your master plan uses 65,000 feet as a demarcation point. It's okay to diverge, but I just wanna bring it up in case you wanted to stick with it. Seasonal and temporary sales, it exists in your zoning ordinance, but it's kind of hidden back in the specific use standards instead of being in the use table, so it requires a bit of digging and makes the ordinance as it's currently structured less user-friendly. So that's the quick introduction for business, commercial, and retail uses.
I think what's important for, excuse me, Mr. Sher.
You have a what?
I think what's important for everybody is to understand that what we have done also is opened up a lot more areas where some of these uses, and future, when you get into some of the next pages, where they will go by a permitted use, rather than going through either a special land use or other means to have it done. So we're offering more opportunities for people to come to the community and start a lot of these retail or business-oriented type things, without having to go through a lot of steps to get to that point. So we're trying to make it a nice, clean way for people to come here and create business.
Which is critical.
Mr. Sher?
Yes.
I have two comments, one type was, financial or business service establishment, I don't see a problem with including what's in yellow. If, for clarity, that's no problem with me. And I would suggest that we change on Y and Z, the retail use is up to 70,000, just drop it down to 65,000 square feet to make it match the master plan.
I had the same comment.
If that goes with the board.
Is it possible to get the table on the screens?
Yep.
There you have it.
Yeah.
You gotta have good eyes.
Y and Z to 65 instead of 70.
Only because that's what's currently in the master plan, right?
That's correct.
So we're just gonna comply to that?
Correct.
All right, I'm good, that's good. I didn't know that, Zach. Thanks for the point out.
Consignment shop, that falls into what? Is that just a retail use?
Most likely unless it operated like a pawn shop, but that's a very specific type of business, so. Most consignment shops would just be retail.
Why do you define a pawn shop?
What's that?
What's the definition of a pawn shop, then?
There's actual state terms, and it's, it involves the lending of money and the holding of the product, which is different than consignment shop, where you bring it in and they sell it and you get the money. There's no loan or other financial transaction signed from, they sell it for you.
Any other questions or comments on business, commercial, retail?
I will add that there were a couple of housekeeping changes to definitions associated with these uses, mostly with the automobile uses, just to make it more consistent. There's a lot of overlap between them, has been reviewed by the attorney. There's a big change to the car wash, and now it's more consistent with a bunch of type of car washes that I can see out in the world. Uh, next up would be medical uses. And the big change is there that we added the medical or dental office in the commercial districts as a special land use. Hospitals weren't anywhere in your use table, they're now listed as a special use in C2. And added large veterinary clinics, large animal veterinary clinics is a special use in the ag districts. We thought that that's where the animals would be, and if someone wanted to do one of these out there, it would make sense.
I have to ask the question. So I'm a medical person wanting to put up a fairly, a couple hundred thousand square foot building. I mean, can a hospital come in under a PUD?
Yes, the way your current PUD is structured, you can propose.
Right.
Various types of uses.
So other people on the board need to know that, or excuse me.
Yes, yes, that's how BOMA.
That's how BOMA, yeah, on the board, so that's what takes us back to that point. This is only directing it now, where if someone came in with a complete site plan for a hospital, then they're allowed to go in those districts under a special land use. They don't have to do it under a PUD.
Urgent care, do they fall under A or B?
Urgent care would fall under A. So the difference is whether or not you have overnight stays. So a hospital could actually be both, with the offices and the hospitals part.
But you could go into an outpatient clinic, have surgery done, and come home the same day, and it doesn't fall into that category.
Correct.
So that's, I think, is that what you're trying to get to, Mike? I wasn't sure.
Right.
Yeah. So that's a different category.
That would fall under A. And some communities will dice it up finer tooth, so for example, will have just offices. And then they would have urgent cares, a different type of use. Because the impact from urgent care, you could argue, was a little bit different than just a general practitioner. You're gonna have more cars, that type of thing. Some communities will also pull out the outpatient facilities, because they may have a slightly different impact, and then hospital would have its own. We didn't really touch a lot into those. My understanding from looking around and general conversations is that as it's currently set up, the medical and dental offices, including the outpatient or the urgent care, wouldn't likely cause significant negative impacts.
Okay.
Folks, good with medical uses?
Yep.
All right, we're clipping along, we passed our two pages last week. Page four, the industrial manufacturing uses. And I have another question here for you guys. A and B, if you look at your current scheduled uses, it has like a dozen different types of things that are under A and a dozen different types of things that are underneath B. We could, there are a couple ways to approach this. We could list them explicitly in the table, which would make the table longer. Or we could do another approach where we do light manufacturing uses.
Similar uses.
And then what we do is we define light industrial uses based on those things that are in the current ordinance. So there are things where, basically, you're assembling parts, you're not making parts from scratch. If you're making parts from scratch, those fall under the B there. Or did I flip them? I may have flipped them, but in one of them, you're, you can manufacture from scratch, the other you're making from parts that are brought in.
Is this regulated by size? Size of components?
No.
By use.
Yeah, and Zach, just to point out, these are in an ordinance definition criteria, but the building code also has criteria for manufacturing uses. So it somewhat correlates to the building component of what you can do within a category, too. So from my standpoint, I look at it from, I'm looking at it from two different aspects here. So, because when manufacturing is making something, it's making something. It's not assembling. So in a way, we kinda have two mixed things that are going on, you know what I'm saying? You could be, you could be, you're producing widgets, or whatever you wanna call them, but then the next thing you know, you could be assembling them. So you got them both in the kind of same category in a sense, so.
So I will, I'll read out here, these are things that your zoning ordinance classes under B. The manufacture, assembly, compound, and processing, packaging, or treatment for previously prepared materials. Textile goods, apparel or leather, sporting goods, light sheet metal products, electric or neon signs, furniture fixtures, glass products, converted paper or paper products. Printing and paper can make awful smells. I've been in Fima, it is awful. Printing or publishing, jewelry, office or artist supplies, professional or scientific instruments. So kind of the lighter you've got parts, you're putting it together or processing them. The A is currently manufacturing, fabrication, and assembling of motor vehicle equipment, parts, farm machinery and equipment, heavy industrial machinery and equipment. Products such as cereals, dog food, soft drinks, and distillation of grains and fruits. Drop forges, heavy stamping, fabricating, assembly, and other manufacturing process, except canneries, slaughterhouses, stockyards, oil refineries, or soap factories, lumber mill or sawmill, manufacturing or processing of wood, concrete, cinder block, and brick, manufacture of major appliances, pressing, stamping, or forming of metal, sheet metal parts, manufacture of iron, aluminum, bronze, and other castings.
For me, you know, manufacturing? It sounds like you're processing raw materials to manufacture something. It sounds like you're taking manufactured materials and assembling or processing them for a different, you know. I'm a little lost on, you know, including but not limited to, and then dot, 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 but.
So the question for you is right now, the manufacturing from scratch, here's all the included but not limited to.
Yeah.
It has all this text. And the other one has all this text.
And so are uses.
Yep.
So I, I don't, I think sometimes it's good to spell out what is allowed in, in so-called uses, because then you can, you can pinpoint it a little easier to a particular.
Yeah, and you've got a section.
So I'm for this, to point it out, because it helps me later on down the line with the codes. So, and when they come forward, then I know what type of use and what type of construction it's gonna be.
So my, my question would be, for this table that you've got going forward, do you want to list all those uses in the table? Or do you want to, for example, create a defined term that says light manufacturing or manufacturing from scratch and manufacturing from processed parts? And then you put all of this stuff in the definition section? So when you're kind of doing a light look at it, you have a general sense of, I wanna do this type of manufacturing, you can look at the table and get a quick sense of where it can go, but for the actual administration and all the nerdy stuff, you can go to the definition section and get the form.
Well, I think it's advantageous to have it within the table, because then it's right there, it's spontaneous, you know, you're looking at it and all of a sudden, boom, then you're looking at that, and then you wanna go, oh, wait a minute, what's the definition? Then you go to definition. That's me, that's me, Doc, because we've had these conversations before, before tonight.
Yep, that's the advantage.
Some of the other people in this room have not.
I'd rather have the shorter version, like he's got it, but just mention that you're dealing with raw materials on one side, because then you're either manufacturing chlorine, or you're manufacturing a forged item or metal.
Or gummy, or gummy.
Worms?
Gummy worms, or the B part, where you're putting a bunch of things together. And then you could look at the uses elsewhere.
Yeah, and this is where zoning ordinance is an art, not a science. There's advantages to having it short here, there's advantages to having everything here.
Sigrid, have a manufacturing plant controlled, I'm not sure.
I wish we did. I wish we had a US one, let's say, at that one. Those are foreign.
So, the way you've got it, except for with a couple words about raw materials in A, I would be tuned to do it.
I agree, I think we need to keep the table as simple as possible and refer back to the larger document.
Okay. Is that the direction I should run with?
I think that's what you're.
Okay.
I'd run with it. So we can move on.
Let's see, on to the changes there, after that. You'll see we've, we've added a couple of uses in these, in the office or commercial districts, and that was when we were discussing the use, we kinda did the game of, would this cause negative impact if it was in that district? And we said, no, probably not, we put it in there. Let's see, marijuana cultivation building, that's part of current amendment, that's in effect, so that's how we got back into there. And, let's see. Right now, the cartridge trucking or distribution center, to me, seems very similar to wholesale or warehouse establishment. So my question for this body is if you'd like to kind of combine them.
It's similar to what, I'm sorry?
Uh, wholesale or warehouse establishment.
Where's your wholesale warehouse?
Yeah.
FF, it's down at the very bottom.
Oh, warehouse establishment.
Is there a definition for those?
Not in your code, no.
Warehouse, different than a distribution center. I think so.
Yeah, I believe it is. If you, if you look at Amazon, or you look at UPS, or if you look at different organizations that just transfer, if you, if you went into the facility down in Oregon where they do transfer, some of the lighter weight boxes, when they go in there, go in there, they're not, they're not in there any longer than 15 to 20 minutes before they're put back on another truck and being taken out. That's strictly a transfer facility. To me, there's definitely a difference in the way.
Correct. Should I keep that difference?
Got it. Any other questions on industrial manufacturing uses? All right, I'll say there were a couple of changes to the specific standards and definitions associated with industrial manufacturing. One is the, currently you have specific standards for concrete, or rather cement and asphalt mixing plants. This is a little semantic, nitpicky, but it's actually concrete. You're mixing concrete, not cement, cement is the stuff that makes the concrete stick. So that's a proposed change. The other change, this is on page eight of the other report, is we've codified some standards for temporary concrete batch plants. So if you've driven on Dunlop these past couple months, you may have seen one in the manners of Westlake, it's a big, tall structure. They put aggregate, they put water, they put cement in, and they get concrete out. These projects, or that type of plant often supports those types of projects. The advantage for the developer is that, well, one, because they're doing concrete, they can close out all the road bonds immediately. If you're doing asphalt roads, you have to wait till 50 or 85, correct me if I'm wrong, percent of the dwelling units are sold before you can put the wear coat, the top coat of the asphalt down, which means you've got, as a developer, a bunch of money waiting in escrow for potentially years. The advantages for the community are that you don't have a bunch of concrete trucks or asphalt trucks running up and down the streets. You get the aggregate there all at once, and then they have little shuttle trucks, and the thing's done in three days. The use that was there was permitted kind of in a gray area of temporary uses, so we kind of ad hoc the standards. They're very similar to this. To my understanding, there weren't any complaints received from that temporary concrete. To my understanding, there weren't any complaints received from that temporary concrete plant.
It actually went really well.
Yep, there, there was a complaint associated to the water supply, but that was unrelated to the actual plant or its operation. So walk you through that, it's proposed as a temporary use, obviously. You gotta do it for a hundred and eighty days. Uh, you could do it for an extra hundred and eighty days if you're still working on the project. Very likely, these are only going to be done for the large infrastructures, for the streets, for the sidewalks. They're not likely going to leave it there to do the individual foundations for the houses. Because it's really expensive to have one of these pieces of equipment sitting there.
Correct.
The setbacks, at least three hundred feet from occupied dwellings, no matter how long it's there. If it's there a shorter period of time, it can be fifty feet from the lot lines, for longer periods, a hundred. Minimum distances for storage of the aggregate and other materials. Uh, then for use, we say if it's there less than thirty days, you could supply other projects in the area. Uh, so for example, this temporary plant that was up supplied concrete for the enclaves. So they, they had it, they mix it and they brought it across the pier. If it's there for a longer period, it can only be for that project. And the rationale is that we don't want you to kind of shoehorn in an actual concrete plant, you know, on the side.
Right.
Cause it takes away the benefits, it creates negative snow. Uh, dust, noise and odor, there are ordinance, ordinance standards, the township already has that covers that. It's here just to make it very clear to folks that hey, you have to be a good citizen while you're out there and we have standards. Uh, removal, just that we expect it to be removed within a certain amount of time. And again, as a practical matter, uh, the folks who own these things aren't going to leave it setting when they can move it somewhere else and make money on it. And then performance guarantee, the idea there is that the townships could collect money uh, to restore the site if they decide they're done doing this and they just want to move to Key West or if they're damaged to, to public roads in the area. Any questions or thoughts on those proposed standards?
No, look good.
Um, another, sorry, another very good benefit of codifying this and encouraging this is that concrete roads are much better than asphalt roads. I know it's blasphemy, they fight amongst each other, but I can tell you that the street my grandmother bought her house on in Melvindale nineteen forty-one still has the original concrete street. Which is pretty darn good. All right, we are on to page five. I'm doing super Paul Harvey mode here today, guys, thank you. Uh, these are other uses or potpourri, depending on your flavor. And kind of a quick summary of the changes there. Accessory buildings for mobile home communities was taken out because it's already covered under A, that just moved up a spot. Administration buildings for residential developments. Uh, so the idea there is if you have a mobile home community or a multiple family, um, community, um, apartments or duplexes that may want to have an office to manage it, is just saying, go ahead and do that. Childcare center, um, is a little bit different than daycare center. Uh, daycare center could include adults. Um, whereas a childcare center is limited to the younger kids. And so that's why there's a little bit difference in the districts there. Clubber Lodge got moved up to entertainment. And we had commercial, we had the kennels in there a whole bunch of places. So now we just have it split by if it's a commercial kennel or a private kennel. Uh, the data processing was removed because we figured that would just be considered an office use. The domestic radio just got rolled into the other one, radio TV broadcasting, but not wireless communication facilities.
Mike, where does, where does, I saw administration building for residential developments. Where would like a sales trailer fall for like a residential development?
That's got kind of a little section under temporary uses already.
Okay.
So that office to manage the construction and to do the temporary sales is permitted.
Put up a mobile home and say that's our administration building for this new Manners of Westlake or something, I thought.
They have to meet certain criteria because they're opening to the public. So they have to meet BFD rules and parking and everything.
Okay.
So it, but it's also spelled out for another portion of the ordinance.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, hotel or motel, uh, you see we added it there for the industrial districts just because there are some on the northern portion of the township where folks thought it, they could see one going in. What changes for landfills? Private airport or helport? Uh, and the note from the township attorney there is that we should add a definition for helport. It's basically going to be taken, taken permission in aeronautics code. Um, and private air, we don't also have a definition for private airport now, we have one for airport. So that's going to be massaged a little bit. The basic idea is that you're not charging money, you're not running charter services out of there, you're, it's your own personal plane. Uh, or if you're using it for prop dusting of your stuff there.
What about, uh, you see some of these planes, the aqua planes where they land on the lake?
That is, um, I'll have to refresh my memory, but I believe that is considered an airport under the, uh, Michigan Aeronautics Code. So if you've got one of those planes on pontoons and you're landing it on the lake and hooking up to your dock, that's considered a private airport for these purposes. If you do it continually, if you just fly in once or twice with the grandkids or whatever, then it isn't. But if it's a repeated thing and the plane lives there and you're fueling the plane there, then it would become this.
Do we limit the amount of aircraft in a private airport?
You could, yes.
I don't think we do currently.
No.
No.
Should we?
How many private airports you got? I don't know, I mean, which?
There's one.
I mean, well, we do have one.
Yep.
Up the northeast quadrant.
There.
I like the guy, he's pretty, he, he does some pretty neat stuff with a biplane.
I, I'm just asking questions, does it make sense to limit the amount of aircraft for it to get, to fall under the private airport designation?
What would most likely tie in is the size of the, the storage area for the planes. Cause if it's a private, private is going to be your own plane. So if you have ten planes or two planes, you're still going to be flying the same amount. Same if you have ten cars or two cars, you're not going to be driving more. Well, if they're really cool extra cars, you might be driving more, but, um, so the biggest impact would be hanger space or pad space for the storage of the.
Well, I'm just, I, I know this, it's out there, but I played softball a few years ago with a guy who, him, his wife and his two sons all had their own planes. I, I'm not BSing, they had four planes. And they weren't big planes, they were like two or four seaters, but they all had their own plane.
Well, that would be something, if there's interest in this body, we're going to have an ORC meeting. When I wake up tomorrow morning, I'm going to be preparing materials for that, so check your inboxes. So it's something that, if this body's interested, you can say, hey, ORC, look at limiting the number of airplanes.
I mean, I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, I mean, I'm just asking the question.
Back to what Mr. Bailey was saying though, with regards to the pontoon planes, that's a special use, is that what the S is there?
Yep.
Cause you're saying that that would be considered a, a private airport?
Yes.
So is that a special use? I can't see the top of the.
Yeah, it would be special use in the ag and suburban farmer districts.
So what about in the residential districts? Because for example, the one that Corey is probably talking about is over on Tan Lake.
Yeah.
So that's in the residential district, so should that be permitted use, a special use? Do people even come in and get it? You know? Do they even let you know that they're doing this?
The neighbors let us know that they're doing it. And the, the demarcation thing is again, is it a, a regular thing or is it just a once a month thing?
This particular one's a regular thing.
Yeah, it's during the summer, it's.
And that's R one, over in that area, so I don't know if you should add special use or permitted use or.
I think now's the time to address that because there's a structure being built to store that plane.
Yeah.
And when the structure is done, the plane will be arriving. And I think we, we, best if we would put it in R one.
As a special land use? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what could be other resident, I mean, I, I don't know if there's any other, should it be special in all of them, all of? Cause there might be other, there might be other locations where they have.
What is an ultralight code?
It's still governed under Aeronautics Code. So Aeronautics Code for airplane purposes, it's.
We got a guy that takes off out of the township park all the time. And he does it all the time, he goes right over my house frequently. So I mean, like, okay, now we're getting kind of like, how far do you take this stuff? He doesn't annoy me. Hot air balloons don't annoy me, all the other stuff that's up there. I mean, I guess. I, I don't know how ultralights work and all that, I don't know the rules on them.
I'll, I'll refresh.
Well, maybe you better look into it, Doug. I don't want to create something that we have a hard time regulating.
But we don't want to create an obstacle.
Well, I'm just, I want to make sure that what we produce is going to be okay.
So a question, would folks be interested in limiting the private aircraft or private airports in the R one to only being lake landing? Cause the airport, the airport part includes the landing strip and the support facilities. So if you got a building, you're hauling a plane up into, that's part of the airport.
On residential line? That's part of the airport?
So at, at the lake.
I don't know if I want to go that far, but that's just me, Doug.
So at, what we could do is say it's a special use in R one, but you're limited to landing on the water, basically. So you're not going to be putting in a runway on hard surfaces in a residential district.
Right, correct.
You have the space for it in your residential district.
And does it need verbiage that it's an all sports lane? Cause I know he got in hot water a couple of summers ago for touching down in a couple of the, uh, non-all sport lanes.
I will check on that and we'll discuss it at ORC next Thursday.
Or do you give it's own designation after O and just call it water aircraft landing strip?
That's something else I'm going to look into.
Yeah.
I can't believe they would allow aircraft to land on an all sports lane.
No.
An airplane. I mean, there's a lot of traffic on the.
Just got to watch over the skiers.
I wonder if they see a plane coming, they'll move.
That's why you have the.
Stand up and duck, I don't know.
Um, the other change in here is you currently have language that says uses which in the opinion of the planning commission are similar to the bill of permitted uses. That's been taken out of the scheduled uses because you already have a section of the zoning ordinance, three point six that talks about that. So it's basically duplicative language, but three point six has a bunch more text to provide guidance. So it's still in there, but it's not here. Uh, then the last change is adding utility scale wind energy conversion systems as special use in a ag. That's already a permitted use, but you have to go way back into the bowels of the zoning ordinance to find it. Uh, so it's just put up here for folks to have it easier to find. And those, those would be the big commercial towers that you see when you drive from Ithaca to Mount Pleasant on twenty-seven or one twenty-seven now.
Okay.
I need a bigger lecture here for all the sheets here. Uh, I didn't hear any other questions or comments or proposed changes for that.
No.
And the note for other uses is the definition for helport, it's going to be your Michigan Aeronautics Code. Uh, we're going to tweak it up and the one for, um, the airport to make sure that it's clear that it's private. One general definition that has been added at the recommendation of the attorney is for facility. Cause it's referenced now a lot in the description of uses, it's a facility to do this, a facility to do that, a facility to do this. Uh, and for most of us, we know what a facility is, but if you get into, um, heated discussions in zoning, it's good to be able to point to something. Uh, so the proposed definition would be out of the all or any portion of a building, structure improvement, paved area lot or combination of any of these that provides a location for a particular service or provides a location for a particular use. Which is kind of generic and, but it, it could probably help out in the future. All right, we went through the scheduled use tables in two meetings there.
That's not bad.
Nope.
Pretty good, actually.
Were, there were some other elements that got swept up in this. Uh, if there's interest in discussing those now, I can keep going. All right.
Why don't you give us the topic?
The temporary storage, that starts on page nine of the report. So right now.
Well, well, before we swing to that, nobody's got any questions about everything from two to nine?
I don't.
Everybody's good?
I don't.
Good.
Give us.
I had, I think I had one question there somewhere though.
Yep.
I had two, but I, I rectified, rectified one of them, my own stuff. Page six. About church place of worship. Well, it's come up, I got to handle it. Last thing I do then.
Thank you.
Organized religious body. So you've taken out the word church, which is good, place of worship, I understand. I'm just wondering who defines what an organized religious body is? Is that going to be governed by the state or?
There, there are some standards for how you qualify it and I'm not sure what they are, so I can.
Mr. Chair? I think what you're asking for is clarification on that. If, if it's state, we need to reference state, uh, code or sections and things on that?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I understand.
Cause there's plenty of like-minded people now think the same thing that the ceiling tile is. They're dying.
Yeah.
That's religion. So I just want to make that clear, so.
I can, I can remember years back that we got into a discussion on that, Brad. And I think you alluded to that, and I think what we said was if there, uh, the organized religious body was recognized by the five oh one C three.
That's what I was going to bring up next.
Federal government, then it would be an organized.
Okay.
They have to qualify from the rules from the state of Michigan to be a facility of such. They have their own definition and, and if, if he's talking about just quoting the MCL number, then probably the attorney should recommend that to us when we go from there.
Exactly, that's what I think.
And then, then he's, he's fine on it and that's a good idea what he came up with.
Yep. And there is also federal legislation. The most recent big one is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Person Act or VALUPA. So there will be some guidance in there and that's kind of the, what started a lot of communities switching from calling it a church to calling it a place of worship because that's the term used there, because it covers all the country and all the communities.
But when you were a kid growing up, it was called a church.
Yep. I can get a couple of updates before we jump into temporary storage of other elements in there. We're, I'm still working on state licensed residential facility definitions and standards. It's really tricky because it's, the state acts are like the, the snake that wraps in on itself and kind of says one thing, but also says a different thing. So I've been working on that with the township attorney. Uh, what we're aiming to do is, um, similar to what we did with biofuel production facilities that wherever it's possible, say, the standard for safe licensed facilities, go see MCL this.
Right, yeah.
Um, there are some that we can pull out individually, like the, the group daycare home and the family daycare home. They are state licensed residential facilities, but they're called out individually in the zoning enabling act, so we can have them separately. But that's what we're working towards is the, the C, the MCL. Uh, another quick update, farm market roadside stand, uh, there's a question of that from Mr. Spiz. And to clarify it, we made it more wordy. And the reason why it's farm market roadside stand is that takes parts of terms used by both the uh, state building act, the, the Ross Steel, the big long name there, which calls it a roadside stand and the, the, um, GAMS generally accepted agricultural management practice standards that call it a farm market. So we're covering our base and when I tested this, folks, it was pretty clear that it was. So we're covering our base, and when I tested this, folks, it was pretty clear that it was, um, the stand, not a farmer's market and a parking lot. We have addition, the affiliated farm market definition has been added. We combined biofuel production facilities into just one, since we're just saying, look at the state. We felt there's benefit on just being brief there. For the restaurant definitions, we've added in definitions from based on liquor control code for the small distillery, microbrewery, and brew pub. Uh, still, we're sorting out with the attorney. They want to have more language that says in the definition, it needs to have the state license, it needs to have the township license. Um, but we don't have that same language now for bars or restaurants that serve alcohol, so we wanna make sure we're consistent, so we're still sorting that out.
Wasn't it based on the number of gallons of brew that could be done in certain categories? That's what we were looking at in the past when we all sat down and had these conversations. So, under law, Michigan law, MCL, I mean, if we relate to that, we should be right on, right?
Yeah, and so the, the attorney wanted to say, basically, that it's a facility licensed by Michigan Liquor Control License and the Township Board that does this stuff.
Then it took care of it.
And it got a little bit wordy, uh, I think was the reason why ORC didn't put "and" the township. Because some of the manufacturing facilities don't require township approvals.
No.
So that's where we're gonna sort out, and we also, I haven't fully gotten answered the question of if we say a facility licensed by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for these uses, we probably should do it for the other uses that also require those.
Are you gonna tell me that the attorney's gonna tell us that? Okay.
Yep.
So you're saying this is really coming from legal? Not from us, because we didn't do that.
Correct, correct.
All right.
And so, from the planner's side, I wasn't nervous about not including it, because it's obvious that if it's alcohol, the state has domain. Um, but the attorneys, they're even more chicken little than planners, and they wanna keep you out of any possible trouble. So that's where they're coming from.
Right.
So I'm still working on that.
Okay, because we don't have an answer there yet, right?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
Uh, for transient temporary usings, I'm still working on a definition. It's basically gonna be traveling carnival and circus is what it's shaping up to be. That's whenever I ask someone, that's what comes to mind, and that's generally consistent with what I've seen. All right, those are the updates. Are we ready for temporary storage?
I'm tired of talking about a night and a start. Because you, we've already had the conversation so many times in ORC, but the rest of the members haven't, so you better hit it now.
Yeah, hit it now.
All right, so this came down from on high. Um, and what generated it is there are a number of people who are getting pods or the shipping containers and dropping them on their property with the belief that it's completely unregulated. If, if they wanna build a shed, but they can't, they just get one of these. But from planning and zoning side, it, it kind of quacks and, and walks like a duck, like a duck shed, so um, they can cause negative impacts. Um, so there was an interest in developing standards. So there are three types of temporary stores that we're looking at. Membrane storage structures, so these are kind of the temporary carports, um, that you get and put up. Um, it excludes tents that go up for special events like weddings or graduations or circuses, uh, or hoop houses. Uh, portable on-demand storage, these are the boxes that come on a truck, they drop them down, and you pack your stuff in for moving or if you're doing remodeling, also known as pods. And the third type is shipping containers. So, we prepared a new section of standards. The quick version, portable on-demand storage, so the pods. Uh, you can use them on any property where you've got active construction or you're in the process of moving. You get one per lot, but if you're doing construction, you can get a second one, and the idea is that you may have to move a bunch of stuff out of your house while you're doing it. You can have it there for 180 days, but if you've got a building permit associated with it, so you're doing remodel, you can, uh, have it there longer until it expires or you get your certificate of occupancy. And you need to be five feet from all lot lines and buildings, and you can't create a vision hazard along roads. So the five feet is kind of the magical number to keep buildings apart and structures apart, so the fire doesn't spread, and if emergency responders need to get back there, they've got space to get in there. Um, and so this would allow, though, them to be up to five feet from the front lot line, not the road, but wherever the magical property line is. But you can't place it there in a manner that obstructs vision or causes traffic hazard, so you can't put it. If you got a bend, you can't put it right out there.
That could, that could win. How, how can this go within five feet of a front property line?
Because it doesn't discriminate between different property lines. It just says at least five feet from all lot lines. And my recollection is, as we were discussing this, we could all think of lots of places where the front of the house is right at the front yard setback. And so the idea was, if you have it in your driveway, five feet from your house, that, that would generally be acceptable.
Temporarily? How long's temporary?
180 days, or while you're doing your construction project, basically while the permit is valid.
Okay, I wanted these people here.
Okay.
We, we all discussed it already.
Lots, lots and lots.
So does everybody kinda get that now?
I get it.
Yeah, all right.
Make sure it doesn't block any sidewalks or safety paths.
Right, can't, can't, if you can't do any of that, it's encroachment. Can't encroach into any of that. Or visibility. And cause a hazard.
Well, and so what I could do is add language.
Well, up to, uh, so many days. Then it's gotta be removed. You can't leave it there perpetuity, no.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
Is add lang, I can add language that it has to be set back also five feet from sidewalks and safety paths. Generally, this language would already cover it, but there may be some cases where the safety path meanders.
Yeah, but you can have road right of way, and you can have a safety path within the property and still be so I don't like the property line part. When you said five feet from property line, you could put it right over a safety path.
Yep, and so I'm gonna add.
I think you need to add some language in there to make sure that doesn't like what, uh, Mr. Sharp just said.
So what I'm gonna add is basically, uh, needs to be set back five feet from buildings, from lot lines and sidewalks.
I like that better.
What about, uh, again, a lot of these homes in this area still owned to the center of the roadway? So you might wanna add the word right of way. Like along Seymour Lake Road, or
Yep.
Probably up, you know, where Meg lives up in the north, a lot of those people still own to the center of the road, so you don't want it to be five feet from the property line. Probably wanna be from the right of way line in those cases.
Yeah, and that's hidden in the definition section where lot line is where the right of way is.
Okay, okay.
But yes, that is very important to differentiate. Otherwise, someone
It's a good comment.
On the shoulder.
Well, you got the legacy there in the right of way.
Oh, when they open the front door there, yep. Any other comments on the, the pods?
No, I'm good.
All right. Next up then is shipping containers. Um, so these are obviously much bigger than pods, so they get a little stricter scrutiny. These would only be allowed, and so these don't apply, this and the pods don't apply if you've got a business that's shipping these things or renting these things out. So if you're the pod guy and you're in your industrial district, these don't apply, because having pods on your property is part of your business. So for shipping containers, the proposal would be to limit them to properties within the agricultural, suburban farms, office, commercial, and industrial zoning districts. So if you're basically in a residential district, you wouldn't be able to have one of them. All of them, as it's written, so R1A, the tiniest ones, which you probably couldn't fit a shipping container on your property, to the R3, which are pretty big. Uh, you get one per, per lot. If you're doing a construction project like Meyer, um, you can have more of them there.
I have a question on them.
Yep.
The container, the shipping containers, is there a definitive size that goes with identifying what a shipping container is? Does it come in?
Is it big as a shipping container?
No. Um, and so the, at the very top of this page, the definition for shipping container, uh, container originally or specifically designed or used to store transport goods during shipping or hauling by ship, rail, semi-truck, or other means. Um, so that, that appears to be a pretty well-defined term of art across regulation that's identified. So pods are a little bit different in that it's not intended for the long-distance hauling. It's intended for temporary storage and when you move your house. So they, they do come in various sizes, and we didn't wanna well, I didn't wanna specifically tie it to one, because then you're gonna find a different-sized shipping container than earlier. If it's there for more than 30 days, you need to get a zoning compliance permit. If it's there for short-term, you don't. It would need to meet the developmental standards for an accessory building. So it's basically, if it's there, it's treated like an accessory building. It would need to meet the same setbacks from lot lines and buildings and those types of things. In the agricultural or suburban farm districts, it wouldn't be allowed in the front yard. Uh, and the, the concern there, correct me if I'm wrong, ORC folks, but that was that it could it's greater impact on the character of those areas. And then five appearance is the exterior shall be kept and maintained with a single consistent paint color without visible rust or markings. So the idea is you don't have a rusty shipping container in your yard, you don't have one with all the markings and tracking numbers on your yard. It has to be a single paint color and kept clean-looking.
Remember that, yeah. Let's look ahead, yeah.
And I will say there there are areas where folks have gone a little crazy with shipping containers right now.
They wanna live in them. They wanna do all kinds of stuff with them. I mean, they, yeah, they have gone crazy.
Um, there have been a couple in the township that have received zoning permits. We treated them like accessory buildings, because if you read the definition of accessory building, if it's meant to be permanently located on the property, that's the closest fit that we found.
But we didn't have anything until now. This is to give us some direction on how we can manage it in the future.
This is to make it clear, because right now it's
We have some already out there, that's why we came, that's what started it.
Yep. So right now, it's like you're trying to call Trump with nines and tens in your hand. You can do it, but it's not as easy to do. I'm gonna be very proud, I'm gonna tell my wife I've worked in a UCA reference to a flag in Michigan meeting. Uh, any questions or thoughts on shipping containers?
No.
I can tell you that we spent a lot of time on it.
Yes.
And we worked diligently to come up with definitions that we thought would be in the best interest of how we could manage it in the community.
Yep.
So, so the citizens probably don't realize it, but we're trying to help where they have been past locations and became a nuisance.
Yep. And I wanna say for, for this body in ORC, members, the fact that there's not intense, robust discussion means that ORC, you guys did a heck of a job getting this thing polished. And I always tell applicants that when you're done with your presentation, you wanna hear crickets from, from whatever body you're sitting in front. So I wanna point out that this is good. That we've got it pretty well polished.
I read over the membrane one too, but I know this is into the future. But what about those people that have three of those membrane things up right now?
Well, it's just no different than what about the shipping containers, multiple shipping containers.
You're, you're, you're gonna create a situation where it's not gonna be able to continue to happen.
So there's a starting place.
Yeah, we gotta have a starting place.
That's good for me.
We have a lot of things that we don't have starting points from right now, which is trying to give them well, especially when you get complaints, so it's, we kinda worked on the idea, okay, we got a problem, now what do we do? So some of these things are all generated from people complaining.
Good.
Um, so for the membrane, again, basically the, the pop-up carports. Uh, you get one per lot, uh, 200 square feet and maximum height of eight feet, and Mr. Ver can speak better to this, but that's where building code starts to get interested in a structure, and where if it gets bigger than that, it's interested because if it falls down, it can hurt you. If it's 195 feet, it's not gonna hurt you. If you're 201 feet, it can kill you, I guess, but that's tied in with building code standards.
Not totally correct in that category.
Not totally incorrect, though. So that's where those numbers came from. Uh, period. You can have it up for 180 days in a calendar year, and it needs to meet the same setback standards for an accessory building. And one question, as I'm reading through this, um, I haven't seen it a lot here, but there are some communities where folks will use the same one year after year after year, and it'll start to get shabby. Uh, so my question is, do we wanna add something similar to appearance that it needs to be kept in good condition and you can't have deteriorated membrane?
Yes. Devoid of rips and tears.
Well, good condition, I think is, or something of that nature. Well, yeah, you can add all kinds of language to it, yeah.
All right, so I will add that out for five.
Great job.
So that thing you've been using over and over again for parties at your house? You, you can't do that.
Yeah.
All right, so one last question while we're still here is we have potential for another meeting on October 28th, two weeks from today. Uh, we could use that to polish up and double-check the language. The soonest we could have a public hearing would be November 4th. Normally, a meeting would be November 11th, but that's Veterans Day, so we're moving it up a week. Uh, so we could have a public hearing that date, but we'd have to decide tonight, because it has to get into the paper tomorrow. So that's a decision. Do you guys think you'll be ready to have a public hearing for this on November 4th?
Yeah, you gotta be 14 days, so you gotta get it, you gotta get it to the paper, no, no later than tomorrow?
Yep.
Because I'm looking at the 4th right now, and then you're going 28th or the 4th, so you're sure.
Don't we have to have township approvals for the expenditure before we go to the public hearing?
Uh, no, they are, this has already been on the scheduled approved things.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Joe?
Susan, excuse me, could this all happen? Do you have time tomorrow to, to make this happen? Who would that volunteer?
Yeah, Cheryl would get the notice to the paper, then it would be published on Wednesday.
Yep, and I, I've already told Cheryl that I could help her prepare the thing tomorrow.
Thank you.
In the midst of my ORC.
So she means Wednesday, the 20th? And then that's our number of days that we have to have prior to the 4th? That makes the 15 days, because we have to have the 15 days of the year. Okay, so yeah, it works out, it's there tomorrow. I guess, is that everybody amenable to that, or?
Well, I don't think we changed very much, did we?
I don't, I don't.
We need to review again in, in two weeks on a Thursday. I don't just.
Well, ask the rest of the people.
I don't think we need to.
All right, then I say send it.
Send it tomorrow.
Right.
Send it.
Because you gotta do the public notice. And then from the public notice, you need 15 days, and that'll be next Wednesday, which we get you to right at the 4th, that's 15 days.
You guys are very lucky that the leader publishes on Wednesdays. That makes it nice for one, for Thursday meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
Where do we stand with legal on this?
Um, as you noticed last time, we only had two pages of comments from legal. There are a couple of things we're still sorting out. The state licensed facilities, and we have a path towards that, it's just kind of hammering up the fine details. There are the couple of definitions to still be added, but those aren't really controversial. Uh, the, the other thing that was particularly interesting for them at this time was the definition for the alcoholic uses. And it sounded like there's interest in just adding that language to the definition, um, to make it clear, so we'll have to tweak the definition for the alcoholic uses to add.
Is it more compatible with state law? Or not?
It's so the definitions were taken basically verbatim from liquor control.
That's what I thought we did previously.
So.
So the attorney's arguing about that?
No, they want, they want belts and suspenders and drawstrings.
Oh, everything added, all belts and whistles.
Yep. Whereas the one that's here is just belts and suspenders.
All right.
So could you, do you feel we can get this through attorney and still make the, uh, print prior to the public hearing?
Yep. All right, thank you, guys. That was two meetings, and we did a whole new scheduled uses.
I think is that from ORC? Well done.
I think it's Zach from ORC. We have no unfinished business under 10, so let's move to item 11, communications and committee reports. The EDC did not meet, and I'll be providing all my materials probably to one of the other committee members as I depart. But I strongly suggest another meeting occurs in the EDC. I've invited the VDA and the village people to get involved with those meetings. It's about ordinance review committee, I think we've-
I gotta tell you right now, I want to personally thank Zach because we worked with Zach for hours on some of these comments that were made in just a brief, component of minutes time. Believe it or not, we have a lot of time in this thing, well, months worth. And I think it's really gonna be beneficial as a matrix to bring people up to speed to say, this is what I can do and where I can do it and all the rest. So thank you, Zach, for all your attention into this matter, helping us. And you just heard half of what we've been working on. We have things coming up that we're still working on, that we got approval to work on, I guess, from the Township Board recently. So we're gonna spend some more time and money, and we'll see you in the future with other additional items.
Good. Mr. Sharp?
Your report.
Are you jumping to me?
Yeah.
You're seeking for me?
Not really.
No, I think that's great what you guys are doing here and updating all that. We're doing the same thing with the engineering design standards as well. Just things get outdated, it's been, you know-
Can you get lost in the shuffle?
13 years, yeah, yeah, so I think it's really good. I can't remember if I talked to you guys about station, fire station number three?
Yeah, we did briefly a while back, because we were talking about the zoning classification too, to put the thing there.
So everybody's aware, the Levy Corporation years ago donated some property to-
Was it three acres?
Yeah, it's a little over three.
Move more than three.
So we're working on Mr. Gold and Mr. Dunn, and then the chief and the assistant chief, we've been working together to try to put together, basically it's a two-phase approach for a new, call it a new station up just north of Excelsior Drive on the west side of-
My new type of design, or what?
So phase one is just essentially gonna be sinking a new fire hydrant up there, you know, a new well, I should say, so that trucks could, you know, if there was a emergency, a fire up in the northern part of the township or seeing Brandon or Metamorab, where they do some assistance, they would have a hydrant to hook up to-
Oh, really?
To fill their trucks and so forth, because we don't have any water up in that area, obviously. So phase one is just to sink a new well with the hydrant and, you know, big gravel parking lot so they can turn around and do things up there. Phase two would be an actual building structure, which according to the chief and the assistant would be probably years down the road still. But we are working with them and we've submitted some conceptual plans to MDOT because we'll need some access points up there, create like a crossover area. So we're working with MDOT on that, we submitted that to them. So just to give you an update, it's greatly needed up there, for sure, so if they don't got, you know, when they need water, they can get it very quickly.
Now, who would manage that well?
That would be the fire station.
Yeah, I'll be okay.
Fire department. We have a couple of these, we have one over at Savannah Ridge over on Stanton Road, and they have one at North Oakland Woods over on East Drainer Road, too. Same type of thing, it's just a switch so that the well itself sits dormant until it's needed, and then they go over there and flip a switch and all of a sudden, the well kicks on and they can start filling their trucks. So we're looking at a couple of different options to do over there, but it could be, you know, it's definitely needed up there.
What sites are hammering those wells at?
We are looking, they want a particular GPM, so we have to kind of look to see if maybe a six-inch well or it might even be an eight-inch well, that goes in there.
Are those variables being posed and all that, then, or what goes in there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
That sounds appropriate to me.
So we have Brandon has one where they actually fill the tank up, too, you know, and they can draw from the tanks.
Perfect.
Yep. Manitou Hills, you guys approved that site plan not too long ago. They're actually coming through with their engineering plans right now, so that'll be, you know, they're looking to get their plans approved, get all their permits and stuff over the winter time, and they'll probably start construction on that. That's the one behind the-
Dakota Court.
The subdivision that Zach found is not properly zoned. Yeah, Dakota Court. And then also last night at the Township Board, they approved, they authorized for improvements to be made to the Camp Oakland lift station, pump station that's on Drainer Road.
Is that for a crossroad, you used property and it got sold?
No, it's not, this is a pump station that services kind of the, I'll call it the northeast part of our sewer district, so it's like crossroads, all the way up to the high school.
Is it to create more capacity?
Yeah, the pump station's a little undersized, there's some issues that are going on.
Right now?
But the reason I'm, no, it's just scheduled for some repairs, so we're gonna kind of lump it all together, I guess, and-
You said something about resize-
Prepare for future development. That's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, because by doing this-
I knew there had to be something there.
It will open up parts of, let's say, the cane and gravel for the area, or parts of down Drainer Road for additional development, so it just kind of factors-
So it creates more capacity, sort of, to it?
Correct.
Alright.
Correct.
I got it.
There were some repairs that were needed, and instead of, you know, spending X amount of dollars, let's spend a little bit more and do it right, is the bottom line, instead of just putting a band-aid on something.
A little bit to resize the pump station?
Yeah, yeah.
A little bit, huh?
So anyway, we're gonna work with the WRC for a second. But again, just letting you know, because that will open up some additional sewer capacity for those areas, so. And I don't know any questions, but then other than, the other projects are just kind of wrapping up. You've seen the residential projects, Enclaves and Westlake that have been kind of wrapping up. Anything else? Alrighty.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Zach, did you have anything else to plan on?
Well, we just touched on Enclaves, it's starting to build, they're regular buildings now, the model's almost wrapping up. Just to get you guys ready, a couple of other things that are bubbling at ORC, I know these were touched on a little bit briefly, but I wrote down all my things, so I'll bring them up, is we're looking at administrative site plans and perhaps the site plan article, just touching on processes to get a little bit better and tighter and clearer. We will be working on the driveway, and one of the things that, of course, he spent a bunch of time working on but didn't get here was the sign article. The current sign article is challenged when it comes to Reed versus Gilbert, which is the Supreme Court case that says what you can do for sign regulation. We wrote it consistent with Reed versus Gilbert, but while we were drafting it, another case came down and the attorneys got nervous and said, tap those brakes really hard, we have to see how this case plays out. But we are looking at sorting that out again, so that will be bubbling up again. And one of the things that I've been discussing with some of the staff and folks who I can get their ear for a bit, is the concept of having an annual meeting with the Township Board, the Planning Commission, and the ZVA. That can be a really useful place for kind of determining zoning ordinance projects, updates for the next year, and other projects that you might want to do. So I'll give an example, the type of benefit that comes from that. I was on the City of Zexeter ZVA for about two years, and we kept getting variance requests for stonings. They wanted to be closer to the road because we had really wide right of ways. Our platted village is 99-foot right of ways, so think how big the other streets are. And I got sick of seeing those variances coming for signs. So at the annual meeting, like, guys, Planning Commission, fix this. So I've been playing around with how that might work and raising it, the idea to folks. So think about it yourself, it's usually a good thing to do at the beginning part of the year, to kind of get focused. And for things that we know we're gonna want to do, it can reduce the time we have to spend, you know, running it through ORC, through Planning Commission, and Township Board. We'll just, you can at that one meeting say, here are the things we're gonna work on, and go work on it. And that's all that I've got.
That's a really good idea.
You're not gonna be here.
Well-
It would be a good idea for you.
I was gonna, so. I was gonna bring that up, I mean, if you guys don't know. I have resigned my position as the chairman of this commission. I'm moving my family down to South Carolina effective in November. And I guess, we may or may not have a meeting on October 28th, so if we don't, I just want to say, I want to give thanks to Bill Dunn. He thought it would be a good idea to call me in 10 years ago and join this commission, so. I don't know what he saw in me, but-
I don't either, I don't know what kind of baby put on the hook. That's all I wanted, because you bit the damn thing.
I gotta thank Bill Dunn for that, and Jack Curtis, and Todd Bell for being my Planning Commission mentors. I would have never been able to do this without those guys, especially without Todd forcing me into this position. And then, of course, each and every one of you guys, including Jim, Jim, and Zach, and everybody on this commission for helping me out, because at times it wasn't very easy about a year and a half or two years ago. So, and I appreciate all the citizens backing me up through all those contentious meetings and non-contentious meetings.
You were here for some of the good stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
So you did have a-
Thanks to the community for supporting, and if I don't see you next time, it's gonna be a pleasure.
We're gonna probably get your address.
Oh, yeah.
It's warmer down there.
It is, we got room, too, so.
I saw the house.
With that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 20:09, thank you.
Thanks for your-